Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the meeting of the MRMAC Planning Board for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Let's begin with our usual housekeeping items. For those that will address the board, make sure the microphone that you're in front of is turned on, the light's bright green, and speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Please also make sure that you identify yourself by name and address for the record. Our next Planning Board meeting after tonight is scheduled for September 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, which is this room. Before we go any further, if there's anybody present who is waiting to offer input or testimony as to item number three, four, or five on the agenda, those items, I anticipate, will be continued, and there won't be any substantive discussion on those tonight, so you need not wait around. Let's see, we'll appoint Nelson into a voting position in for Neil's position. Pick one. Let me take the opportunity, we always do this at the end of the meeting, but let's do it at the beginning as well. Reminder to anybody in the public who may have some interest in volunteering on the Planning Board or any other town board, there are vacancies available. It's kind of fun and not too much work, and come down and be involved. And if it's not the Planning Board you're interested, there's a ton of other town boards that have something for everybody. Town won't work if we don't volunteer and do it, so step forward if you want to be a part of it. With that, I don't have any other housekeeping items. Tim, do you have any Planning and Zoning Administrator Report for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In your packet, you find a memo dated August 9th with a regional impact determination for the TC Boston Development and Reichel Site Plan. Staff recommends that this be found to be not of regional impact, as it does not meet the criteria that the Board established.
What is the will of the Board with respect to the staff's recommendation on...
I will so move.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to uphold the staff's recommendation on regional impact. Tim, is there anything else that you have for us?
Just one quick note that on September 7th, I will be back to full staff. We have Ms. Stephanie Bryn will be joining my department as the new part-time administrative assistant, replacing Sharon Hayes, who moved up to general government about a month or so ago. So thankfully, we were able to get that filled much quicker than I anticipated, so we actually were able to utilize the pool of candidates that applied for the general government job, and were able to find a couple people to interview out of that pool. And I think Stephanie will be a good fit for the department, and look forward to having everybody in chairs again in the department.
Excellent. Welcome to Stephanie, although we usually don't see the administrative assistants at our meetings. I'm sure we'll be at the office at various times, and she'll be there to help, or we'll see her on email distribution lists or things. But good for you, I'm glad your staff's going to be back up to full speed. Do any members of the Board have questions for staff about anything? If I see none, then let's move on, pass the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report, and let's see how fast we can read these into the record and vote them on to another date. John Flatley Company is the applicant and owner, continued review for a site plan, of a site plan, to construct a 120,000-square-foot warehouse and distribution building per the requirements of the Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcel's located at 707 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial District and Aquifer Conservation Area, Tax Map 6E, Lot 36, Case Planning Board 2021-24. It's continued from June 15th and July 20th Planning Board meeting, and due to a lack of quorum here tonight, which would result when I recuse myself from voting on that item, they have requested a continuance to September 7th, 2021.
I will so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Nelson, to continue to September 7th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will go down as an abstention. 3-0-1, the motion carries. Item four on the agenda, John Flatley Company is the applicant and owner, continued review of a site plan to construct an internal access road per the requirements of the Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcels are located at 645, 673, 685, and 703 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial District and Aquifer Conservation Area, Tax Map 6E, Lot 31, 33, 335, Case Planning Board 2021-29. It's continued from our July 20th Planning Board meeting. For the same reasons as the earlier item, they've requested a continuance to September 7th, 2021. What's the will of the Board?
I will so move.
Move by Lynn, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 3-0-1 for that vote. I have, I'm the abstention. LNF Realty Trust is the applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan amendment to modify site lighting and add additional pavement and related improvements. The parcel's located at 396 Daniel Webster Highway in the C-2 General Commercial, R-4 Residential, Aquifer Conservation, and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 4D, Lot 32, Case Planning Board 2021-26. It's continued from our July 6th, 2021 Planning Board meeting, and the applicant has requested a continuance to September 21 in order to address drainage concerns raised by Public Works and Community Development. What's the will of the Board?
Move to, I'm sorry, to both of them.
To continue to September 20.
Continue to, yeah.
Motion by Nelson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to continue that one.
I'll just note for those, all three of those, that the only public notice is the continuance here tonight. There will be no further written notice to the butters.
Excellent, yep. I forgot to include that in the motions, but thank you for picking that piece up for us. Okay. Item six is Jeff Greenaway as the applicant, and Jeff Greenaway and Erica Crawford as the owners, review for acceptance and consideration of a conditional use permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit. The parcel's located at 130 Bedford Road in the R-1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 6C, Lot 326, Case Planning Board 2021-31. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicants?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you know, the revisions to the zoning ordinance we made a couple years ago now make detached accessory dwelling units a conditional use permit through the Planning Board. There are several criteria in order for the Board to grant such a accessory dwelling unit. In the memo dated August 10th from Robert, he goes through and outlines those criteria from the ordinance. Staff can report that the applicant has met each of those criteria, and we just have the two general conditions that we have for all ADUs recommended as part of that approval. There is no need to move for acceptance of this, because it's not a site plan, it's just a motion and public hearing regarding the allowance of the ADU per the conditional use permit requirements.
All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Go forward.
Be comfortable.
Sit down at the desk, whatever's comfortable, get comfortable.
Be comfortable.
Although, we're not going to take very long. It's pretty simple.
How you doing, Jeff Greenaway? Make sure you hit the button, and make sure you hit the button, it's bright green.
Should be bright green.
Bright green.
There you go.
Jeff Greenaway, 130 Bedford Road, MRMAC.
Thank you for this, and thank you for your application. Ordinarily, if it had been an attached ADU, this could have been one that the staff had done administratively, but when they're detached, we've got to take a look at them.
Yep.
So, do you have anything that you would like to add to what's in, what's been provided already, or the information in the staff memo?
My first time doing this, so, not that I know of, unless you guys have any recommendations.
No, you're in pretty good shape. Once you get the staff to say you've met all the conditions, you've done everything that you need to do for us, I think. But does anyone have any questions about it? Nelson?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a sketch that shows where on the site you're planning to put this unit.
So, actually, the garage, it's right next to the house adjacent. That is the one that we're going to turn into an in-law apartment for my parents.
Oh, okay, so it's the existing building.
It's an existing building, we're going to rehab the inside and, you know, bring it up to code.
That makes sense. I didn't see it in the...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent, thank you. Other questions?
The other question I had was the septic. Were both of these beyond the existing septic system?
So, I haven't had the septic drawn up yet, but I understand that I have to have a plan with the town hall, like a septic plan.
You're building a separate septic system, is that what you're saying?
No, the requirements of the ordinance require that they have a plan approved by the building department that shows it can handle the additional load if necessary, and if there's a problem, then they have to construct per their needs.
Yes, and if needed, we will, we will put in a separate septic, that's not a problem.
Okay, that's your intention.
Yeah, I think that's a creative solution that the legislature came up with, where they get to use what they've got, but they'd have to have a backup plan, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, you know, if we need to, we can. If not, then, you know.
Makes a lot of sense.
But yes, I will have plans drawn up.
Perfect. Other questions by members of the Board? Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? All right, then we'll consider that an open and closed public hearing. We do not have to vote to accept it. It's up to the Board to consider final disposition of the request. Nelson?
Yeah, I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept this plan. I don't know if we're accepting the plan or accepting...
It's approval. There is no acceptance for this.
Granting approval to this plan as presented tonight, and...
With the conditions per the staff memo.
Yes, thank you.
So, is a motion to grant the conditional use permit with the staff's comments, second by Ms. Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I'm pleased to see the property being utilized again.
Excellent. I'm not even sure what the neighborhood, I'm not sure which property is, but...
Pete Gagnon's place.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Well, you got a lot of heritage, you'll have to be on the Planning Board.
I've already heard, I've already heard, yes.
That's, that's in the deed, if you haven't met it.
Is it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Back before New Hampshire had Planning Boards, Pete thought up the idea, and then it's everywhere now.
Oh, really?
Pretty much. It's Nelson that thought up, in a second. Anyway, thank you for that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0. Excellent, thank you. Thank you for coming in, you're all set, you'll get a letter from town with all the details, and go forward.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay, we are up to, item seven on our agenda, which is Henry Clay Drive LLC is the applicant and owner, review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site plan regarding the expansion of an existing crematorium, construction of a two-story office, building, and associated site improvements. The parcel is located at 10 Henry Clay Drive in the I-1 Industrial District, Tax Map 2D, Lot 4113, Case Planning Board 2021-33. Tim, hang on one second before we get comments. Pardon me, folks, hallway's a great place for that conversation. Thank you. Tim, what do we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In your packet, you'll have a memo dated August 13th from Planning and Zoning Administrator Robert Price. The Board is, I'm sure, pretty familiar with this site. This is the Rivet Crematorium on Henry Clay Drive, that's been in front of the Board a couple of times for modifications. This particular request for an amendment was because during construction, it was discovered that the construction doesn't align with the approved site plan phasing. Originally, Phase Two, which is the current phase, was supposed to consist of the crematorium building, the upper and lower parking areas, and associated site improvements, grading and lighting. And Phase Three was supposed to consist of a 3,118-square-foot addition, and a parking immediately to the east of that addition, and two new light poles. The revised plan seeks to make some modifications of the drainage, pavement limits, and phasing. We note that the lighting has been removed from Phase Three, but this change was already approved by the Planning Board last fall, when you gave the last amendment to this plan. So, this is just a matter of trying to align the phasing on the plan with what's actually been constructed on the site. And I know the memo says there is an acceptance, but you actually do not need to do acceptance, because this is an amendment to the approved plan, and we would recommend that the Board grant conditional final approval per Robert's memo.
Thank you, Tim, for the introduction. All right, give us a presentation of what we're proposing, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Chris Geida, and I'm a wetland soil scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants, doing business at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire, working with Mr. Rivet and Henry Clay Drive LLC. As Tim mentioned, this is mostly an housekeeping item. Unfortunately, Chad Brann, the engineer for the site, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here to take the bullets and slings and arrows. Instead, it is fairly straightforward. It's really just kind of bring, from what I understand, bringing the plan up to what was done in the field, a little bit out of phase. So, no major changes to the best of my knowledge, and I think everything is accordance with the regulations.
The only reason we really need to do this is we can't sign off on occupancy permits unless the phasing is done per the plan.
Okay. Questions by members of the Board?
Yeah, what's your time phasing for the completion of this site? Is this something that's going to go over some years, or do you have...
Well, I honestly, I don't know specifically. I know they've been working forward on it to get it done. I would anticipate within the next couple of years. I know that he's been fairly busy, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is Phase Two that you're already working on, and Phase Three is still yet to come?
Correct.
Gotcha. Other questions?
So, I have...
Okay, we don't have to accept it. Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing an empty room. If there's no further discussion by the Board, it's appropriate to consider final disposition of the application?
I'll move that we grant final, conditional final approval of the application, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within six months and prior to plant signing, unless otherwise specified, subject to staff memo.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Nelson Disco. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to grant conditional final approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see where I am now. That was seven. Number eight is TC Boston Development, Inc. as the applicant, and Reichel Company as the owner, review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan to construct a 323,750-square-foot warehouse distribution facility and associated site improvements. The parcel is located at 50 Robert Milligan Parkway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2D, Lot 78, Case Planning Board 2021-32. Robert, uh, Robert, Tim, the other guy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In your packet, you'll find a memo dated August 13th from myself regarding this project. As described in the agenda, this is for a pretty large warehouse distribution facility. This is at 50 Robert Milligan Parkway, which is the current Reichel Oddly excavation site. This was the site that Atria Medical was originally looking at back in 2011, and has long been identified in various planning and economic development master plans as a priority parcel for development. So, we're very encouraged to see this project moving forward here. The project, as I said, is about 325,000 square feet, has a lot of tractor-trailer storage spaces, and can have up to about 60 loading bays. However, that number is probably dependent on what the end user will likely be. At this stage, we do not have a final tenant known. TC Boston is a development firm that is putting this plan together in the hopes of eventually leasing or, and/or selling the property to potential tenants. The project has not been completed for peer review at this stage. We got the peer review check on August 10th, which starts the 10-day review period. I am very hopeful that we will have those comments within the next several days. So, rather than requesting that the Board continue this out the typical month, I'm requesting and suggesting, for economic development purposes, that we continue this to the first meeting in September, on September 7th. We should have a pretty good handle on where things are with peer review at that point. And given our working relationship with Bowler Engineering and Austin on several other projects here in town, we're fairly confident that we're not going to be running into any major engineering review comments here. I think that really covers my end of things, and I'll let Austin move forward on this. But generally speaking, to summarize, our recommendation is to vote to accept the application here tonight, take the miles of public testimony that this packed room will have for us, and then continue the public hearing to September 7th.
Excellent. Thank you, Tim, for the introduction, and Austin, when you're ready, when the technology starts cooperating.
Austin Turner with Bowler, joined this evening by Elisha Long from Trammell Crowe, representing the applicant.
All right, so I'm just going to pull things up here. As, as this is loading up, we're, as Tim mentioned, we're looking at the property at 50 Robert Milligan Parkway, and that's the, as people are probably familiar with it, it's the Oddly piece, as it's affectionately known, has been worked as a gravel pit, pulling the big ledge face wall that you can see from the Effie Everett down. It's been that way for decades, really, they've been working on that. Elisha and his team have worked, you know, very closely, they're under agreement on that property now. We're pursuing the requisite entitlements to put forth about a 324,000-square-foot distribution warehouse building. Right now, it's, there is no tenant for that specifically. It's speculative at this point, but really the, this particular part of the market is, is fairly warm, so there's a lot of interest in it from a number of different parties, but no specific end user or end users, as the case may be. And we're looking, obviously, tonight, kind of starting the site plan review process. We did have a discussion in a meeting with the Conservation Commission yesterday evening, which went very well. They were going to be putting forth a correspondence to the Planning Board, I don't know if you've received it yet, but...
I did, I received it by email today.
Okay.
And I'll highlight the details, but so far, everything you've said seems consistent with what the email said.
Yeah, it was, it was a very productive conversation, they had some good feedback for us, and nothing of major significance, really, and we'll get into this in some detail. Only thing that they made of a new request, really, was to add some additional fencing along the southern side of the property, which is most proximate to Bowers Pond. Beyond that, we've been in front of them enough with various projects, so we had incorporated all of the other items that were customarily, you know, received as comments into the product already. So, it was simply that additional request, and we were in pretty good shape there. So, if you can, you can see behind me, right?
Yeah, I can see right there, that's why I'm staring in the wrong direction.
No, I got you, I remember that TV back there. So, this is, this is the product as a whole, you can see the, kind of the bold black line is, is the shape of the property. It gains access from Robert Milligan Parkway out here on this corner. This driveway, as you can clearly see by the aerial, exists largely today. In fact, we intend to utilize the portion of the driveway that comes up from Robert Milligan before it takes a turn. And then we've done some kind of tuning of the geometry, straightened it out, to accommodate some stormwater management features that we're proposing, and I'll get into that in a second. We've had some very productive and good conversations with the fire department, specifically Captain Manuelli, about this project as well. We've laid this project out based on his team's initial feedback, too, making sure, you know, in terms of full circulation around the building, access points, driveway widths, hydrant placement. One thing that he and the team have asked us to pursue, which we're, we have active conversations with DOT right now, it's very important to them that we try to pursue a gated and dedicated fire access to the Effie Everett Turnpike. They said, based on some of the emergency responses they've received in this general area, sometimes they have to go all the way down to Exit 8 in North Nashua, turn around, and then come back up, and that's a fairly long response time. So, we have, we're having conversations with the Highway Bureau at DOT right now to see if they will allow us to put in a gated access dedicated for fire, and we're working with that. So far, anecdotally, some high-level conversation with them, they seem receptive to the idea. Have to work through the mechanics of it, but we're, we're trying to support that request.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Yep, of course. And then, so as you come into the property, we have this singular driveway that comes in, and as you can see here by the, the way the geometry kind of sweeps up and around the back, the intent is, that's the primary driveway. It's intended to kind of direct the, the loading vehicles, the tractor-trailers, to the rear of the property immediately, and make that the primary route. The, the parking for employees is located along the front, being the Effie Everett side, as well as the side of the building. And you can see, we've made that driveway narrower, and also kind of an offshoot of the primary to really encourage that truck traffic to go to the back. This side driveway is really to provide full access around the perimeter of the building for emergency response, not necessarily intended to be for truck traffic. We don't intend, nor is the facility going to promote necessarily truck traffic through the front of the facility, but that's to provide full access for emergency response. The primary operational piece is in the rear of the building, where we have about 60 loading bays along that rear side of the building, and then we have the trailer storage parking in here, along the back of that space area. So, the, the operational components are kind of confined to the rear of the property, the employee parking and such is located to the front of the facility. Then we have the circulation driveways around the perimeter. What we've done here, and it's, it's kind of, it was strategic on a number of reasons. We've had some, I've had a preliminary consultation with NHDES as well. We're going to obviously be going through the Alteration of Terrain Permit Program with them. This property being, it's located in the Aquifer Overlay District, and it's also proximate to Bowers Pond, we made a concerted effort to stay within the limits of the property that had been historically operated as the gravel pit and, and used for that kind of earthwork activity. We're not clearing or proposing to clear any of that mature vegetation that has established the buffer between us and Bowers Pond. As you can see here, even though it's a bit faded on the overhead, we're staying in all that active gravel pit zone. And in fact, this area kind of up here in the upper left of the property, that's the, that's the ledge wall you can see from the highway, that's that big earthwork operation that has historically been done. We're keeping a pretty reasonable distance away from that, and we'll have fence around the perimeter. The intent is that we're not doing any more work in there, leave it alone, leave it as-is, and then kind of work on the flat spot that has been created through the historical earthwork.
So, that ledge wall will still be in the back of the property?
Yes, sir, correct.
So, your building's going to be kind of tucked down into a, the area where all the gravel's been taken away?
Yep, it will be. Yep, it'll be, that, the interior part of that site, kind of the development footprint, is generally flat. I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's generally flat, and it's a little bit higher than the highway elevation, really. I mean, everybody, I'm sure, is familiar with it.
Yeah.
But it's going to be substantially lower and kind of buried under that ledge wall as you go to the back of the property.
Okay. How tall is the building going to be?
I believe we're about 36 feet, correct, yep. Single-floor, high pile storage in the interior.
Okay, so not the highest of height, but pretty high?
Pretty high, yeah, pretty high, but not nearly as high as that ledge wall. You can go up there, you can, you can see a pretty good distance on a clear day, so...
Excellent. Is it going to have like the, a lot of people working inside of it? Is it a robotic distribution center kind of a thing, or depends on...
Not entirely sure, I think it depends on the tenant.
Yeah, we, there's no tenant identified, so we are not sure.
I mean, it looks like I would guess who a tenant could be, could be, but...
I think everybody speculates that when they see the building. Yeah, but I, I mean, it could be, it could be a single tenant. The, the idea behind it, too, is that it could be multiple, which is why the bays are set up the way they are. You could, you know, tenants could lease portions of this building if they wanted to, and it would kind of be uniform, but it's all going to be warehouse distribution predominantly, or ideally.
Excellent.
So, what we're doing, and I can get into the plans, too, we can get into the mechanics of that. What we've done here, and this kind of came out of our request with DES, this property has been, has been operating in this fashion for so long. DES actually does not have a record of it having received what was formerly called the site-specific approval, and is now called the Alteration of Terrain Approval. So, there's nothing that they can find on record. So, when we were talking to Michael and his team, what he asked us to do, and this is a stormwater conversation, he asked us to model the property as in a pre-developed, undisturbed condition, which, I don't, maybe 30 years ago or something, right? So, what we've done in the drainage model, it's modeled as a wooded undeveloped site. And the stormwater controls that we have in place, which we'll talk to in a second, are pretty substantial, given that we're modeling the site as a wooded area, which is being converted to, you know, what you can see on the screen, in kind of this distribution facility. So, realistically and practically speaking, they're probably oversized, and the math kind of proves that out, but that's what we're doing. So, when I go through and I'm talking about stormwater, you have that, at least, context of how we had to construct this, because this will be the first time theoretically the property has been altered as far as DES is concerned. A little interesting kind of nuance in the regulations, but...
Yeah, it definitely is. I mean, there's certainly lots of things that are older than, than DES, it only goes to the 60s.
Actually, when the site-specific program was actually engaged, I think that's the wrinkle.
Oh, okay.
You know, because the site-specific evolved into Alteration of Terrain, but this may have been being worked prior to site-specific engagement, yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't surprise me, it's a massive site. Has the fact that it has been a gravel pit, and obviously, there's granite and ledge and all of that, is there any part of your ground that will absorb water or, or take drainage?
It's a great question, yeah, and, and the answer's yes. So, it's interesting, we've done a very substantial geotechnical program out here, and we're also going out on Thursday afternoon, or Thursday morning, to do some additional supplementary test pits, just to satisfy some of the requirements that come with the DES permitting program. It's the High Intensity Soil Survey is what we're doing. So, the front, I'm going to call the front, this left side of the property, where you see that big ledge wall, ledge is not shallow, but it's not deep either. The ledge profile drops off very, very quickly, and the site's actually in an aquifer district, because the underlying soils are very, very receptive to infiltration. That ledge profile drops off about here, kind of that, I mean, That ledge profile drops off about here, kind of that a third to a quarter of the way through the site. And then, as you get into here, this is, this is a lot of historical fill that has been completed. When they cut down that big hill, they kind of folded it over. But the underlying ledge profile dives off very, very quickly, and the existing native soils are very, very permeable. So what we've done, we, DES allows you to take the information from, you can find an infiltration rate, a published infiltration rate by NRCS. You cut that in half. So that's the conservative, that's kind of the super-conservative engineering approach you take. These soils, as published by NRCS, would have an infiltration of approximately six inches per hour. We modeled that as three, and we're doing some confirmatory infiltration testing out there on Thursday as well. Which I expect is going to probably vastly exceed that number, given that this material is very granular and is going to go into the ground very quickly. But we're very confident that this site has, is very receptive to infiltration, hence the pond and hence the Aquifer Overlay District. So what we've done, which is a great segue into the stormwater design, what we've done, I'm going to start on the right side. So we have this area up here that kind of faintly outlined. That's a large surface detention infiltration basin. Similarly, in this kind of knockout right here, what you can see is carved out, that's also a surface infiltration basin. And then underneath this set of trailer storage, we have a subsurface chamber system. Those three basins are detention and infiltration systems, which are doing the predominant work in terms of stormwater management and attenuation, both in terms of infiltration, treatment, et cetera. Just by order of magnitude, I don't have these numbers committed to memory, but they're in this very large drainage report, the requirement for us to infiltrate is approximately 8,000 cubic feet, or something to that effect. We're doing about 194,000 cubic feet of infiltration with the, with those three basins. Just by nature of the size and kind of how the math works out in terms of that pre-development condition, that's why I was telling you, it's substantially overdesigned because of that kind of little nuance in the site-specific history there. What we're doing, so to kind of finish the point on the ledge, this oval, this long oval here, based on the geotechnical report, we didn't do a tremendous amount of exploration over here, because we don't have a building or parking. But the limited geotech we have over here, and again, doing some confirmatory work on Thursday, we expect to find ledge that's a little bit shallower in that location. So what we've designed in that specific location is a surface basin. However, it's a sand filter. So what it's doing there is you have a surface basin that, to you and I, it's going to look the same as the detention basins. Underneath that is a section that's approximately 30 inches of sand and gravel. And that, and it's a mix. There's a very specific mix of soil that allows the water to slowly filter through, and it achieves that filtration, which is the same thing you'd achieve for infiltration basins. You want that contact of stormwater with the native soil material. We've created very similar basins with DES. In fact, I use the same profile that I've used on products in Claremont, where we had high ledge, that we've worked with DES and have approved as some of our, our prior work with them. If, for some reason, we get out there and are pleasantly surprised that we don't find shallow ledge in that location, we're going to convert that to a conventional stormwater surface infiltration basin. Currently, it's a sand filter. It's underdrained. And the kind of grade break, if you will, in terms of watershed boundaries, this right about here represents the point at which water kind of goes down the hill towards the parkway. The balance of this site, generally, even though it's pretty flat, goes down toward Bowers Pond. So when you see kind of the, the weight distribution, if you want to call it that, of the stormwater, it's because we're trying to get all that infiltration on the Bowers Pond side, maximize infiltration capacity, and it kind of mimics the hydrology, the way the watershed boundaries were set up. And I, I'm happy to get into the mechanics. That was pretty engineering for a second there. But that's, that's kind of the, the stormwater to this product is kind of the biggest engineering thing that we're doing, really. Yeah.
It's very interesting. Not that I want to cut off the discussion, I just want to remind all of us, and especially the board, that our first step is completeness, and so we want to gather enough information to determine whether the application's complete.
I got way too excited about engineering. Do we want to, do we want to go into that?
Actually, I, I think several of us have the kind of engineering mind and want to, you're fascinated by the idea. But, so I don't mind the sidebar. But do we, do we have more information that we would need to decide if it's complete, or is the board prepared to make that decision, or... Lynn would move to find the application complete. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to find the application complete. If there's more to your presentation, then let's...
I'm going to be, I'm going to be very brief and succinct.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Take it, I mean, you don't have to cut it out, cut it short if you want to.
No, no, I'm not going to bore anybody else further, because I know this is acceptance. We're going to get into the mechanics of it. Just generally speaking, on the utility front, it's going to be served by all the regular utilities. Penn and Chuck provides the water. Merrimack provides the sewer. We've worked with, we've done flow tests out here, so we're confident in the water pressure. We're confident in the volume. Talked to Kyle about sanitary. We understand how it's going to connect. It goes kind of down Robert Milligan Parkway, then cuts kind of behind FAA. Capacity is not an issue. He's comfortable with all that. We're going to get the sewer connection permit with the state, which obviously will be run through Kyle's team. So we'll be working on that concurrently, and those filings are going to be shortly after this initial discussion. Landscaping and lighting is fairly customary. We are, we are respectfully requesting one waiver from the planning board with respect to interior parking lot landscaping. It's actually, as far as the ordinance would have it, is Section 3.11.1.1, Items I, II, and III. The ordinance requires 10% interior landscaping. 10% interior landscaping for this kind of compact parking area would substantially increase the footprint. And what we tried to do was incorporate, you can kind of see, it looks like almost teeth on a jack-o'-lantern. We tried to create these interior regularly spaced island, which affords us the opportunity to put street trees in there, or regular trees. And then we have a lot of vegetation, obviously, around the perimeter. This, that section of the ordinance affords the planning board, provided you felt it appropriate, to grant that waiver. We, as the applicant, obviously feel that's appropriate, given that we've incorporated a number of landscape islands into that compact parking area, and we're surrounded by a pretty substantial amount of vegetation, limiting the parking's visibility from the street, which, in my opinion anyway, is really the kind of spirit and intent of that particular part of the, the ordinance.
I would concur, Steph. We have no issue with the waiver as requested.
All right. That sounds good. I think we're a little early to actually vote on waivers. I think we want to get the peer review and have an opportunity for the, even more public comment. Is there, Tim, no waiver required for the continuous face of the building being several hundred feet long?
Not in this particular zoning district, no.
Okay.
Why? Why is that? This is industrial?
Because the industrial district anticipates these larger industrial buildings. There is not that same requirement for the breaking up of the facade.
Sorry to jump on your question.
You want to, you want to ask it anyway, or you can...
The only other item that likely is going to need a waiver is that narrow strip where the driveway comes up from Robert Milligan Parkway. Some of the lighting does exceed the 0.2-foot candles at the property lines, but it's minor encroachments. So either needs to just tweak the lighting a little bit, or I'd be comfortable with waiver and minor, for those minor encroachments.
That's a great point, Tim. Thank you. So what we're actually contemplating is removing the lighting on that stretch of driveway, and even kind of that long, narrow stretch. It's not lit today. The parkway isn't lit, and given kind of what kind of traffic we're dealing with here, it's not like it's going to be high retail, heavy turning movements or anything like that. So we're contemplating even removing the lighting on that driveway section altogether.
Good. What's, what's going to be visible from the turnpike? With elevations and building size and trees and buffers, as they may or may not exist?
So the turnpike, the vegetation, you can kind of see it on here, is pretty substantial. You, you can see into the property. I mean, you can, you can kind of see the ledge faces in there today, right? I have an elevation. I can pull up. They kind of cut one from this corner, if you'd like to see that. It's not necessarily a true view as you're driving down the highway. I, you're going to see the building. The parking will be largely screened, I think, given its elevation with respect to the road.
I would agree.
I think you're just going to see kind of the, this building facade in here.
The only caveat to that is when they widen.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah.
Pretty serious. I mean, that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like from the elevations you have in your plan set that the ledge face is about 90 feet high, and your building is 30-odd feet high. So you're going to have a lot of that still visible from the highway. Let's see the elevation that you have.
Yeah, I can pull that up right now.
The building is probably, as big as it is, it's probably going to look dwarfed by that ledge face.
The ledge face is pretty impressive. But when you walk up top, you almost get that, like, kind of vertigo feeling when you're looking straight down?
That's the one that's in our packet.
Yeah.
Is that the site from the turnpike?
I don't see the, I don't see the ledge from the corner.
So you're looking at this from kind of right here-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
I think when we, when we come back for the next time, if you could do a rendering that showed us something of what it would look like from the turnpike?
Like a photo visualization or something?
Yeah, something like that. What, the best you can do, I mean, don't, don't go to the end of the earth to satisfy the request. But it's certainly right at the beginning of Merrimack's border to the south and where people get off the highway to go to the outlet mall. And it should have some sense of a good appearance or an attractive appearance.
So something kind of along, I'm going to call it the frontage, but this general frontage area?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll see what we can do. We can see if the architect can put something together.
Is there intended to be any signage that faces the highway or the roadway?
Probably on the building, I would imagine. I don't think we're contemplating any kind of highway pylon signage right now. It's probably going to be tenant identifying signage on the actual building face. I don't know what that says, but maybe we can have the architect kind of, you know, put tenant or something on the building to give some, some framework for what that looks like. What we are contemplating is the potential to see if there's a, the sign out on where Milligan connects in. If there's potential to, it's an off-site pylon. We're working to see if that's a possibility. It's not part of this specific proposal, but that's something... Because the way the parkway works, it's kind of tucked away in the back here. Some identifier that might be on the main public street would be appropriate. Not that it's a kind of a destination. Yes, it's not Bath Pro Shops or anything like that, but...
So similar to the campers-in signs?
Yeah, correct.
You're talking about, does something indicate that you're back there?
Yeah, exactly.
Where the Shaw's Building, for instance, up in the north end, has their sign on the building. It's back from the road. I wanted to ask about the ledge. Is the ledge stepped at all in its, on the base of the ledge? The way it is now, is it stepped? And do we require steps?
It's partially, it's partially stepped today. Partially stepped today.
Yeah.
But we have a, part of the site work package is to actually step the whole thing back far enough so you don't have to worry about rockfall.
Yeah, rockfall, or, or even personnel falling.
So it's a good, it's a good question. So what we've actually proposed is part of this in consideration of that point?
Yeah.
We're putting fall protection on top of that ledge wall. So this include, this package before you includes fencing on top of the wall.
There will be fencing on top of the ledge. Okay.
Yeah, we understand, just in working with Tim and the team, that that was kind of a historical item that the town has expressed some reservation over. So we've incorporated it as part of the package.
I see that on C404.
Okay, what, this, that is, oh, I see it. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, I didn't notice it before, but now I see it's there. That's good for safety, just because some...
Never know. And Nelson, to your point, too, I mean, part of what's, Eli was mentioning, you can see, we've left a pretty healthy offset from that ledge wall.
Yes.
And we've worked with a geotechnical engineering consult, not necessarily concerned that there's going to be some kind of massive rockfall zone, but we've incorporated a fall zone, if you want to call it that, into the plans, which has fencing along that perimeter as well. So it provides that buffer and would theoretically, you know, provide some kind of protection to the driveways and parking areas and buildings and stuff.
Yeah, over time, weathering and so on, you could get some dropping, yeah.
Have you guys had any communication with your neighbor to the east?
Neighbor to the east?
The Rod and Gun Club.
Right here?
Yeah.
We have not spoken with them, no, and they haven't reached out. I think they were, they were notified, obviously, but...
A decade ago, the last time there was some consideration for this property, they came to the planning board meeting, and they were essentially just concerned that there isn't some development that will later allege that the new development is disturbed by the activities of a Rod and Gun Club, which is a shooting range. And so I just want to make sure you're aware of what they do, and that, at least as far as the chair is concerned, I wouldn't be open to hearing complaints that the neighbors are too noisy for you. They're, they're there first.
Yeah, no, we're very aware of who the neighbors are, and I do not imagine that this use will be too disturbed by having a gun club next door.
Unless they start ricocheting off the building.
Pretty good ways away, and they, I think they shoot in the other direction anyway.
I think there's a different dynamic with the previous potential for Atrium being there with the number of employees that are on site versus a distribution facility such as this, where it's a much more transient employee base.
Well, and all the noise that the gravel pit used to make. Certainly, yeah. But I, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that they're there and that there isn't some sense that some future tenant is going to gain some traction complaining that that needs to go away, or something like that, so.
No, we're, we're fully aware. We'll make any future tenants aware as well.
Awesome. Other additional parts of your presentation, or more from the board, anything? I think it's great to see some development here. I mean, speculating as to who it will be. It could be somebody we've never even heard of that distributes things that we don't even, you know, basically the consumer product. You know, car parts for, who knows what. But if it turns out to be something that's got some consumer attention to it, that would be even more interesting to see down there. But not that that influences whatever choices you make. I think it's been interesting to see it run as a gravel pit, and everybody sort of talks about truck traffic and what that would do to the roadway. And clearly, if the truck traffic from that didn't hurt the roadway, nothing about your truck traffic is going to do anything any more severe or different.
Kind of leads into what I wanted to say briefly about traffic, is that based on the information that we have for this type of use, you're going to see 90 to 95% of that traffic is going to be in and out of the facility, out to DW, right to Industrial Drive and Turnpike. It's very little of this traffic we anticipate going up and down DW Highway in either direction.
Yeah. Is the, the left turn from Robert Milligan onto DW Highway a difficult one to make? I don't remember if that's signalized, or it's not, is it?
It's not currently signaled, yeah.
And I, not, not supporting or arguing that it ought to be. I just want to make sure everybody...
I think the volumes in that section of DW provide plenty of gap for vehicle traffic going in and out of Robert Milligan.
I think it's so close to the light at Industrial Way, or whatever that is, that...
Yeah, they're not going to be able to put light there.
What?
They won't be able to put a light there. I can't imagine with them that close.
No, I wouldn't want a light there, but I think the other light will block the traffic and give you your turning.
It'll give you the brakes.
It'll give you the gap you need to turn. Can you go there? I don't have any other questions or comments or any of that. I'm fascinated to see more about the drainage system. I mean, nine-acre roof is going to have a lot of water to shed somewhere.
Which is what, which is why I got a little bit excited about that earlier in the presentation, clearly. Started running away before we even accepted it.
Very good. And so, well, we can go through the motions, just for the purpose of the minutes, to say that we opened a public hearing and see if there's any rebutters who wish to weigh in. We'll certainly have another one the next time you come around. Open, closed, public hearing. If there's no further discussion by the board, it would be appropriate to consider a continuation.
You just brought to mind one question, and that is, is this coordinated with the state in any way, as far as their entrance onto DW Highway?
I would anticipate that the driveway permit for Robert Milligan would likely need to be updated since all of the vehicle access would be from there, so...
Yeah, and that's a good, good question, Nelson. We are working, the traffic engineering consultant is going to be working with, with DOT in that regard. And we had submitted kind of the initial traffic assessment. They're completing the, the full version of that, which was acknowledged in Tim's memorandum. We will have that completed before we're back here, presumptively on September 7th.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So when this property was looked at in the past, there was issues with, with, what was it? Sewer and water getting back there, and that was just too expensive for previous people?
That was one of the factors that Atrium had cited, along with their change in corporate philosophy after they were bought out. But yes, in my conversations initially with Austin and Eli, when they first introduced this project to me several weeks ago, I asked that question directly, and the utility extensions are not something that they show any concern about at this stage.
Okay, so that is going to all get taken care of?
Yes.
I thought I heard that. I just wanted to...
No, it's a good question, because it's a long run of private utilities to get out here. And we talked to him about that, as he mentioned, when we kind of first started just introducing the project. And Eli and I were talking about that in the very early phase, when this was just a twinkle in his eye, and aware and prepared to accommodate those.
Your, your long run in the sewer system is going to be longer than the trip to the treatment station... treatment station from there, because you're going to cross DW Highway and go right into it in about fifty feet. The private section's going to be twice as long as the public section.
Or more, yeah.
Where, where does it tie in?
So the sewer for here, it's just kind of off, it ties in right about, there's a manhole right about down in here somewhere. Yeah, right down in the cul-de-sac.
At the Milligan.
At the Milligan cul-de-sac, I guess.
Yeah, the end by the campers in.
Yeah.
It's just that the driveway into the property is so long.
Yes.
And believe it or not, right now we think we can grab it a few feet all that way.
Yeah.
It'll flow downhill.
But it's downhill.
It's downhill right now, yeah.
It helps.
That kind of stuff goes uphill a little bit harder.
Yeah.
Clean water uphill. All right, if there's no further discussion by board members, then it's appropriate to consider a continuance to September seventh. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
If there's no further discussion.
With no further?
Yeah, no further notice to a butters. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to grant the continuance. There's a chance that I may miss our September seventh meeting, and if I do, good luck, and I look forward to having you in town. And if not, if I'm here, then we'll listen to the presentation and offer whatever voter opinion is appropriate for that, but.
Appreciate it.
I may not be the one that sees you. You may see Paul sitting here in the middle of the room.
He's going to, so he gets to see my really lengthy drainage presentation?
Yeah.
Yes, I want the whole show next time.
That's one of the things that you heard earlier, the folks on Bedford Road that are building the auxiliary dwelling unit. We talked about Pete Gagnon. Pete's favorite topic was to talk about all the soil science and really understand all of that. He'd teach the board about stuff, and he'd, he'd teach the applicants about stuff, and they'd have lengthy discussions about, you know, winds or soils and.
I'm, I'm not going to get that deep on that.
In all seriousness, from the economic development half of my job, I'm very encouraged and glad to see you guys moving forward with this project. This is a parcel that's been a priority for us for a while, a long time. Thank you.
We're very excited to be part of it.
Well, with that, have a good evening. Have a good evening. I think we're almost done with our business for the evening as well. Item number nine on our agenda is a discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anybody have any other items of concern? I'll repeat the pitch for members.
We need new members.
Yeah, I'll repeat the pitch.
Folks, you can see there's only four of us sitting here. If somebody can't be here, you're going to have petitioners that can't come. They're going to be pushed off. That's not going to give this town a good name. We already did it tonight once. We need to have people here. It doesn't take that long. If I can do this, the rest of you guys can do this.
And gals.
And gals.
I agree with you.
Please. It's only two nights a month.
We've got a few members who are not here, but ordinarily a full board has seven members and a.
Three alternates.
Three alternates.
And of, of the seven, one of them is the town council member, but that's six regular planning board members and three alternates, so there's.
We have a vacant full-time position and two alternate positions vacant.
Correct.
So there's plenty of room for you and your neighbors.
Yeah, come be involved with things. It's interesting to find out what people have planned for things. Instead of seeing it on Facebook with who's building that thing by vault, you can come here and know two years ago what was going to be built by vault. Got approved. Okay, enough of that soapbox for me. We are up to the approval of the minutes of August third, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move as printed.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Nelson Disco. If there's no further discussion, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'll abstain.
One abstention. Three zero one to approve the minutes of August third, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing I missed an opportunity a minute ago to bring up some of the thing, because I wanted to mention the, um, oh, yes. This came up at the, at the Sohegan River Local Advisory Committee, that there's a home on Beacon Drive that is being added on to, substantially added on to.
Yes.
And the plan that was submitted to the local advisory committee did not show the floodplain line, did not show the hundred-year floodline. And I wondered, does that come to the planning board? It's never come to the planning board.
It's a single-family residential development. It's building, building department only. We have no jurisdiction at the planning board on that.
Okay, well, we made our comments as a board, but I didn't ever see it here, and I had a feeling it didn't supposed to come here. But I wanted to double-check that with you, Tim, while we were here, and, and, okay.
Nelson, I saw some plans on that, because I'm very familiar with that area. And where they're building is probably as far away from the floodplain as they could get, as opposed to where they could have put it, which would have been a huge impact.
Yeah, well, I don't know where the floodplain was, because it didn't show on the plans they showed us.
Well, I know where the flooding goes.
Okay, well, yeah.
And they're, and they're well, well out of that, which I can't imagine they would have put something anyplace else.
I can't imagine why they'd want to, but just a question. And then I wanted to ask if it came to the planning board at all, and I thought not, but I wanted to verify that with Tim. So it'd be up to the, it was, the state has to approve it for the wetlands board, or somebody has to. And they were looking for advice from the local advisory committee. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
No worries. Excellent. If there are no other comments, then it's appropriate to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to adjourn. Thank you very much for the work. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.